May I have a question?
Have no questions, Mayor.
Item B, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say, motion may be accepted on the paper. Any opposed? No opposition. All right, item five, we do not have an executive session on that. And here's where we're going to have to pause just a minute. Go to item six, it could be a planning and zoning point Rudy shows back up. So. Can I open it?
I think we have provisions in our bylaws that suggest two more meetings.
That's okay. I actually have a hard stop before seven.
Well, we will be done by then, sir.
Yes, we'll be down in five minutes. All right, I'll turn it over to the planning and zoning. I want to call on order and establish presence of the forum based on the presence of people here who need their reform. Do I, we're going to have approval meetings, many meeting minutes from June 20th, 2022. Have you read those orders on the prior condition provisions?
I make a motion to approve the minutes on PNC.
I am motion, I have a second. So we have a motion, may I have a second, all favor? Okay, we're going to go to item C, discussion, consideration, action as may be appropriate regarding our recommendation to the City Council on preliminary flat requests initiated by Phillip Sands for preliminary flat of lots one through four, block A, lots one, three, block fifty-eight, lot B, lot one, lot C, Village of Ferris addition, the nine point five five four, closing my site, beside is located along the east line at the interstate highway forty-five service road north. Of FM six six, and east of the Burge Road, Ferris, Texas, seven five one two five, within the Mason Phelps survey abstract number eight two four, and being a portion of EPCAD property number one eight eight four five, within the city limits of Ferris, Ellis County, Texas.
All right, commission, as a correction, that should say rest of Burge Road, just a correction. Okay. So today we have, this particular property is made up of three parcels, and they're planning to put a mixed use development here containing all of this retail. You may, if you've been there for some time, remember seeing this in zoning. I think that was back in March that we amended, we amended their PD to get some issues that were outstanding corrected. And so we did do that, and so they presented a preliminary platting because the last time that they presented a platting was over two years ago, so it has expired. They never did do a final platting, so this is where we are right now. So they presented this, this is zone PD June, and staff is recommending approval with conditions of the preliminary platting. And the conditions are as follows. On the face of the plat, depict an access easement overlay over all private streets with, or the whole width of the right of way. And they need to provide those documents to the city. On the basis of the plat, please depict access easements to the bank property and to, to the north and to the restaurant property to the south for circulation and flow. On the basis of the plat, please depict the building lines for the commercial and residential rights. And then they have to correct the title block to say, this is number four, lots one through three, block A, lots one through thirty-five, block B, and lots one through two, block C. If you look up at the initial request or the item on the agenda, it read having, as having fifty-eight lots for block B, and that is incorrect. So we're having them correct that before they move on to the next part of the planning process. And then number five says, please edit the plat note, number five, to say, the purpose of this plat is to create an addition to the city for mixed use development. Condition number six, please edit plat note number seven to say all HOA slash POA, which stands for Property Owner Association, lots, streets, utilities, sidewalks, landscaping, fences slash screening, and fountains will be maintained by the HOA slash POA. Per the comment letter sent to you, this is number seven, please add a plat note that states any structure, new or existing, may not extend across new property lines. And then number eight, per the preliminary plat checklist, documents establishing the HOA shall be submitted to the city for review slash approval prior to the time of submission of the civil construction plans and shall be filed for record at Ellis and or Dallas County as applicable prior to final plat approval and city acceptance of any project associated public improvements. Number nine, provide confirmation from Ellis County Addressing Department that the new street names are approved. So since the last time you may have seen this, they have changed those street names, street names such as Ferris Oil, Trapeze, Ski Ball, I think it was, yeah, there's a couple, Coke Sterling, so.
Trying to say Ferris is a circus.
And then finally, number ten, I brought approval of the preliminary plat and press section ten point one to eight of the city of Ferris subdivision rates. A community facilities agreement is required before construction starts on any private or public improvements in the subdivision. And the subdivision shall execute a contract with the city providing for the installation of public improvements. And so they need to provide these things if they are approved. And I did call Mr. Sands today and run through all of these with him, so he is aware of all of the requirements if he should be approved.
Okay, my question now is, we're going to approve this, this preliminary plat, and they're going to make the known changes in the act with the final plat. Do you review by each, or by all?
Yes, sir, they will do that after they do their civil plans, so the next step for them would be to provide the civil plans to the city for review.
So, the only reason we're doing this is because the time is fired, because this is already covered.
Well, they had other issues that they didn't investigate that were on the original preliminary plat, they changed the site plan, so some things changed, lots changed, the amount of complexes changed from the original site plan, so they fixed all of that, they fixed their zoning, and so now we should be in a better place to move forward. It recommends approval and, and the city council.
The staff recommended.
Yes, we recommend approval with, with all conditions.
Mr. Hatfield, that would be our recommendation, is to, to make an approval with conditions being met as set forth in the staff report.
So, you need to make a point. I make a motion for approval of preliminary plat of lots one through four, block A, lots one through three, block B, lot two, block C, Village of Ferris, additions, other additions.
Let's present the very. I second. I'm very responsible, I, so, carries. This is a fear of the equal time frame that we're looking at for the final plat.
Mrs. Sands is here to answer those questions.
So we should have, that is, we, we find that, and so why makes me.
Yes, we should have anything.
Some of those things are just made simple services, maybe a day, but they work, some of them we work.
When I saw the posts, the surveys are, the flags.
Okay, moving on to item D, discussion, consideration, and action as may be appropriate regarding a recommendation to the City Council on a preliminary plat request initiated by Arrosa Sprague for a preliminary plat, plat of lot one, block A, free up storage addition. The five point nine one two, post mine site beside is a property located at nine eighty west FM six six four, Ferris, Texas, within the Mason Phelps survey abstract number eight two four, and being a portion of EPCAD property number two one five six four two, within the city of Ferris, Ellis County, Texas. This is a storage facility on the east side of, was still, was west side.
West side, right in front of Shark Creek Ranch, it's, it's already a pre-existing storage facility. What they are planning to do after plating, because this property has never been platted, is to add a, I think it's a thirty thousand square foot building to the property that was still before enclosed self-storage. So that's what they're planning to do, but as I said, it had never been platted, so we had to make them go through that process before they build, so they were presenting a preliminary plat right now, but then they will have to also do a final plat after they did their civil plans, drainage and all of that stuff.
So, since you read this, as if all the reformers been made for preliminary plat.
Yes, so staff is recommending approval with conditions of the preliminary plat, the conditions are as follows. Please edit the title block to say lot one, block A. It wasn't really an inch issue, they initially said lot one, block one, but what we've done consistently with the plaits here in the city of Ferris is always have the lot be a number and the block be a letter. And so I just wanted that for continuity, that is the only condition that I needed to put on this report.
So, why your motion to approve the preliminary plat? Well, now you got like. Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion made, the second, all in favor. Motion passes. Okay, item P, our last item for the evening, discussion, consideration, and action as may be appropriate regarding a recommendation to the City Council on replat request initiated by Waylon Longino and Harry Chapman for replat of lots one R and three R, block four, press view addition, the zero point nine oh five plus minus acre size. Our own properties located at six oh one and six oh five East Fifth Street, Ferris, Texas, seven five one two five, within the Mason Phelps survey abstract number eight two four, and being a portion of EPCAD property numbers one six three zero seven five, one six three zero seven seven, and within the city of Ferris, Ellis County, Texas.
Okay, so this is a, the plat is taking two lots there, this is right on the corner of Fifth Street and the Service Road of forty-five on the northbound side. And so he's replying this property, had been planted previously, he's replying the corner property and the neighbor's property to gain ten feet from the neighbor, so that he had a little bit more space to work with. And E D C, so staff was recommending approval with conditions, and the conditions are as follows. On the basis of the plat, please depict the two foot utility easement located along the eastern side of the property as shown on the previously recorded plat. So there was, there's already a sixty foot gas easement on this property, but there is a ten foot utility easement because there is a water line that runs on that eastern side as well, so we just need to show that on the basis of the plat, so that we know where it is. Number two, drainage plans slash study should be submitted along with the civil plans, so the next step for them is to submit drainage plans with the civil plan. So they, they better do that, because typically we get that at the preliminary plat stage, but because this is a replat, we have to ask for it a little later than usual. Number three, water and sewer layouts must be submitted with civil plans. Again, the same thing, we usually get those layouts with the preliminary plat, this time they will be providing it as they submit civil plans, which is the next step of this process. Number four, deeds and official tax certificates must be obtained before the plat will be filed and reported. No permit shall be issued until received. Number five, landscape plans must be submitted along with the civil plans. And then number six, on the base of the plat, amend the owner's certificate to include an express dedication without reservation to the public for easements, public use, the streets, alleys, racks, subway, parks, school sites, and any other public areas shown on the plat. So, Mr. Longino is here, if y'all have any questions for him. And so, that is, that's recommendation that it, that it would be for approval with condition.
What's going in there, what?
All right, oh, what's going in there? Working on, working on something that'll be good, let's say, but it's not done yet, we need it back for two feet to make it out, but it'll be, it'll be something nice. What's that?
So, what's, what's the zoning on this block?
So, the, the property that is located on the corner of Sixth, of Fifth Street and forty-five, it's on quarter or commercial. The next door property, which is a residential property, is, some are one residential.
That's what the changes?
There, there were no changes to the zoning, all of these were already done appropriately. We're not changing any, sorry, this is just the plat.
And another ten feet at night.
Do I have any, any questions?
So, recommendation for approval of replat of lots one, lot three R, lot four, question addition, point nine oh five, plus minus acres. I'm going to go there, six oh one, six oh five, East Fifth Street.
Yeah, the motion made, I have a second. Okay, motion made, second, all in favor. Motion carries. At this point, I'm going to adjourn the planning and zoning. All right, then, put the back on, Mark. Item number eight, City Council in business. No executive session.
No items for.
All right, item C, discussion, consideration, and action as may be appropriate regarding recommendation from P N Z on a preliminary plat request initiated by Phillip Sands. Sir, how to help you out there?
Sands.
For a preliminary plat, lots one through four, block A, lots one through fifty-eight, block B, lot one, block C, Village of Ferris addition, nine point five by four acre size, is located along east line, about age forty-five service road north, of FM six sixty and west. It says east, but it won't be west. Lot of age for a service road. But then Mason Phelps, our abstract number eight twenty-four, being a portion of Ellis County President District property one eight 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 four five, within the city of Ferris, Ellis County, Texas.
Council staff's recommendation would be to approve the recommendation made by the planning and zoning commission, which was to approve this plat with the conditions met within the staff report.
I'll say.
All right, motion made, second. All in favor, I'm saying. Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries. Item D, discussion, consideration, and action as may be appropriate regarding recommendation for planning and zoning of preliminary plat request initiated by Arrosa Sprague for a preliminary plat, lot one, block A, Ferris Freedom Storage Station. The five point nine one two acre size is a property located at nine eighty west FM six six four, Ferris, Texas, seven five one two five, within the Mason Phelps survey. Abstract number four, being a portion of Ellis County President District property two one five six four two, within the city of Ferris, Ellis County, Texas.
Is Mr. Sprague here?
He is not here today. They just added one building at the back, it will only have water connections, it won't have a restroom or anything like that, it's just self-storage, with some parking.
The council staff's recommendation again would be to approve the recommendation of planning and zoning and approve this upon the conditions being met in the staff report.
I make a motion to approve the plat.
I'll second.
Motion made, the second, all in favor. Any opposed? No opposition. Item D, discussion, consideration, and action as may be appropriate regarding recommendation from P N Z on replat request initiated by Waylon Longino and Harry Chapman for replat of lots one R and three R, block four, press view addition. The point nine oh five acre size are on properties located at six oh one and six oh five, East Fifth Street, Ferris, Texas, within the Mason Phelps survey, abstract number eight twenty-four, and being a portion of Ellis County President District property one six three oh seven five, one six three oh seven seven, and within the city of Ferris, Ellis County, Texas.
And, again, for this one, that staff recommended approval with conditions, and the property owner has identified what those conditions are.
I make a motion for the final result. Motion made, second, all in favor? No opposition. All right, without a doubt, closing, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn the regular city council. I get most of them. I'll say. All in favor? No opposition, meetings closed. All right, number ten on the agenda, workshop now, the city of Ferris, the Ferris City Council will convene into a workshop for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget workshop on Monday, July fifteenth. At the Ferris I C, Ferris City and I C, in Detroit, so. Develop a room, we're in San Antonio. Ferris, Texas, seven five one two, lots of papers, both of them, and five people on the meetings. Number eleven, we'll call it to order and establish presence of the forum. We have one. Item twelve, comprehensive planning workshop. Presentation, information, and discussion by, between the City Council and City Executive Liaison Staff regarding the city affairs fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three budget and matter related to their.
All right, if you guys want to leave, you're more than welcome, this is your chance to get out of here. All right, if you guys want to leave, you're more than welcome, this is your chance to get out of here and not have to listen to us ramble on for quite a while.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.